Very good, thank you. Good evening, everyone, welcome to this August 3, 2021, meeting of the Gallatin City Council. It is 6:00 PM and we will call this meeting to order. We're going to begin this meeting like we do each meeting with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. This evening, Councilman Alexander will offer the invocation and Councilman Fan will lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
Please join me in a word of prayer. Eternal grace of God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We thank you, dear Lord, for allowing us to see a brand-new day. We pray of God that everything we say, everything we do in this meeting tonight will be pleasing in your sight. In Jesus' name I do pray, in every heart said, "Amen."
Throw in a pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which is safe, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and Ms. Kitchell will call the roll for us.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Present.
Councilwoman Fan.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Present.
There we have a quine.
Thank you so much. Next, you have the minutes from the July 20, 2021, City Council meeting.
Most approved.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander. Or is there anyone that has any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the June, July 20, 21, City Council meeting minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no, the minutes are approved. It's time now for public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where if there's an item on the agenda of interest to you, you may speak to it. We ask that you introduce yourself, share your address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. Also tell you that at the end of the meeting, there's a time for public recognition on non-agenda-related items. So you also have an opportunity to speak at that time if you so desire. So at this time, public recognition on agenda-related items is open. Seeing no one jumping up, running to the podium, I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Move on now to Mayor's comments. I do have a couple of things that I want to share with you. First of all, because time is of the essence, until 7 o'clock tonight, the Gallatin Police Department will be hosting the National Night Out in the City Hall parking lot. You can come by, grab a hot dog, some chips, and school supplies galore. They've got lots of stuff out there, including backpacks for kids, school supplies. So I'd urge you to get up here by 7:00 PM and participate in their night out. Also want to say huge congratulations to Taylor Black. She competed in the Miss America Outstanding Teen last week. While she didn't win the contest, I think she won a lot of good memories and good experience, and she was certainly stellar in representing Gallatin and the state of Tennessee beautifully. And I'm just so very proud of her and everyone who helped get her there. Finally, I'm very, very pleased to introduce to the public this evening, the councils all met him, but I want to introduce our new fire chief, Chief Jeff Feman, and ask him if he'd like to say a few words and give you all an opportunity to welcome him and come to the podium.
Mayor, thank you. I'm excited to see everyone again this evening, it's nice to say hello. I've been here since Monday, I've met some great people, nice. Everyone next door in the fire department have been welcoming. You can tell there you have an excellent group of firefighters here ready to serve the community. I'm excited to be here, and I ask that if you need anything, please don't hesitate to reach out and contact me. And I look forward to serving the mayor and this elected body to serve the community of Gallatin.
Say anything, I know I'm excited that you're here and the department is too. We welcome you.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Welcome, have a great time together and look forward to the days, weeks, months, and years ahead. Also, just a couple of things, I'm gonna go down the list of coming events. This August 9, which is that Monday, is the Shop With A Cop Santa Classic Golf Tournament at Tennessee Grasslands. You can contact the police department if you're interested in playing in that. That does raise money for that event at Christmas time. There is, on Saturday, the 14th, a drive-through Mobile Pantry. It's happening at East Winchester Street at Unlimited Potential, which is where First Baptist Church is there. And then there's also another Community Field Day happening at Thompson Park from 1 until 5 on Saturday, the 14th. I think that concludes the upcoming events and moves us now to the regular agenda. The first item on the agenda is second reading on ordinance 02107-41, and Councilman Dan is recognized for that.
This is the second reading ordinance, ordinance appropriating drug funds for the 2022 budget, and I so move.
Second. Motion to approve by Councilman Fan, second by Councilman Alexander, is there any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02107-41, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is second reading on ordinance 02107-42, Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $52,000 for the in-low parking lot repairs and repaving, and I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George, any discussion on this? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 02107-42, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, it does pass unanimously. Item three is second reading on ordinance 02107-43, Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating $2,500 in TBA funding to Gallatin Beautiful, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilwoman Love, any discussion? All right, second reading on ordinance 02107-43, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Passes unanimously. Item four is second reading on ordinance 02107-46, Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor, this is second reading on moving a budget from reclassified utility inspector position, I so move.
Motion by Councilman Alexander.
Second.
Second by Councilman Overton, any questions, discussion? This is second reading on ordinance 02107-46, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Second reading does pass unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 02107-45, Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, providing that the code of ordinances of the city of Gallatin be amended by adding a new article to Chapter 11, therein providing for the regulation of mobile food vendors. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilman Hayes, second by Vice Mayor Fennell, opening the floor for discussion. Ms. Haumacalli, you may have input to offer, or...
I would just add that I did change the one request that you made last week, which was the hours of operation from 5:00 AM till 11:00 PM. That is the only change that was made. There was some discussion about possibly having an exception made, if they got an exception from the city or from the permit administrator. I did not make that change because it had not been discussed publicly with this body, and so I would just open that up for discussion if that's something the body's interested in or not.
I mean, I think we should.
Should we put this back on our work session agenda?
Yeah.
For, to make, in case there's any more changes need to be made?
This is for, we can certainly put it back on the work session, but this is first reading, and so we still have the option to amend it on second reading.
That's what I'm saying, so we can discuss it at the work session if there makes anything before second reading we can.
Um, I would ask, has there been any feedback from the association after the discussion at the work session last week? Have you heard anything?
I have not.
Anyone?
No, that was the only thing, like we were discussing the other night about, you know, in case somebody wanted to go to a, so like an industrial facility or something like that.
Some unique scenario.
That has different shifts, you know, like at 2:00 in the morning or something like that. How would we word that and put that in there?
And what I had suggested to Councilman Hayes was that there is a section in here that says the city can extend the hours for a food truck rally, and we could change that to that the city or the permit administrator can extend the hours for a food truck or a food truck rally. And I think it could be a simple process. You might want to bring Mr. McCord up and let him speak on it, because he will, someone from his office will be the permit administrator. But I think it could be a simple process if they are going to be in an industrial center or at a hospital and they're gonna be there overnight, they could email and ask permission, and he could grant permission or someone in his office. But I won't be handling that, so you may want to discuss that with Mr. McCord.
Can we bring that up at our next committee meeting then?
Yes.
When we do that, okay.
The other thing, too, would be the $100 fee, because apparently the department head said that they thought that that would be losing money, that it would cost about $130 to do, actually do it. Add up again, too.
We'll discuss that at the committee meeting.
Okay, well, I'm gonna be on the work session then for next week. We have a motion and a second to vote on first reading this evening. So this is going to be first reading on ordinance 02107-45. And ask all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, passes unanimously on first reading. Item number six is first reading on ordinance 02107-47, and Vice Mayor Fennell is recognized.
Thank you, Mayor, this ordinance appropriating $8,782.56 for Economic Development Agency vehicle lease. Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Hayes. I would remind you guys that this is not a new expense, this was an expense that was somehow omitted from the budget this year. Any questions? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 02107-47, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. First reading on ordinance 02107-47 does pass unanimously. Item number seven is resolution R2108-52, Councilman Overton.
Thank you, Mayor, this resolution authorizing the city of Gallatin to participate in the Public Entity Partners Safety Partners Matching Grant Program, and I so move.
Motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander, any discussion? This is resolution R2108-52, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Does pass unanimously. Item number eight is resolution R2108-53, Councilman Fan.
This is a resolution authorizing the Gallatin Parks and Recreation Department to apply for the 2022 Blue Cross Healthy Place Program Grant from the Blue Cross Blue Shield of Tennessee Foundation, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Fan, second by Councilwoman Love, any questions or discussion? Resolution R2108-53, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Okay, item number nine was not discussed at the work session last week, and so therefore, consideration has to be passed by two-thirds of this body. Are you willing to hear and discuss this this evening?
Yes.
Let's have a motion.
Most to discuss it.
Okay, motion, motion by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Alexander, all in favor of considering this item, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Okay, we may discuss it, this is resolution R2108-54. And it, well, Vice Mayor Fennell, you're gonna be recognized for that, I won't go into it.
You want me to go ahead and read it?
Sure.
Okay, this is a resolution reclassifying Building Code's administrative assistant position. Consideration of this resolution require two-thirds vote of the council to discuss.
You don't have to read that part, that's what we just did. And I don't know if someone from CUDS wants to speak to this or not, but the full resolution, since it was on the work session, you want me to go ahead and read that real quick? It just says that the Building Code's Department Position of Property Master Administrative Assistant III is reclassified to Position of Administrative Assistant II. The new pay grade will be GN, the new hourly rate will be 211301, for an annual salary of 4395066. The position of Property Master Administrative Assistant III will remain on payroll through September 24, 2021. Basically, and the reason that I was fine with it coming to this body tonight is we have someone that's been in the department for a long time who is retiring, and he feels like he can essentially downgrade that position and hire someone to fill that. So it's a, it's a bit of a cost-saving measure for that department, filling that position.
Is this a temporary position?
No, 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 this would be a full-time position, but it would be, when they, when it said that will remain in place to, until September 24, that gives an opportunity for some cross-training. So they would hire the new person several weeks before the existing person leaves.
Okay.
That could position to save us a lot of money.
Mm-hmm, got it. That's where we are. If anyone has any questions, or Mr. Harris, is there anything I didn't say that you need to add? All right. Questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander, any discussion? Any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. Resolution R2108-54 is approved unanimously. We will move now to other business, that concludes the regular agenda, we're moving now to other business. I do know that Richard DePriest has something to bring before you this evening, and so I'll ask him to move ahead with that.
Thank you, Mayor. Got to cut two different things here. The first one, Bradley's Alley trash situation. Years ago, there was residential cans that lined Bradley's Alley. Bradley's Alley is here behind City Hall, right behind the buildings that face Northwater. I don't know how many, how long ago it was, they got rid of the residential cans, put dumpsters back there. The dumpsters were placed on private property. There, some of the property has been sold since then, and the owners do not want dumpsters on their property. The mayor and I have been working with the business owners, property owners, trying to come up with a solution to help them out, because the, just the layout of the land back there is not conducive for...
Accessible.
Not accessible, there's a lot of overhead lines for dumpsters to be dumped. It's just a, it's a unique situation, and it's just, it's, we're trying to come up with solutions. So far, there's been a lot of back and forth. We thought we had something figured out, but then some of the property owners come back and said, no, they didn't want the small four-yard dumpsters on wheels that would be rolled out in the alley to be dumped. They didn't want them at their back door. They don't want to get with the owner of Chubbs. They said we could put the trash can, the dumpsters back there, but the property owners did not want to have their employees taking the trash all the way behind Chubbs each night. So with this body's permission, we have discussed putting dumpsters in City Hall parking lot, which would entail taking up probably four parking spots. There would also be a dumpster enclosure that would have to be done. Haven't had any discussions with Mr. McCord yet, but there would be, there'd be some stuff that we would have to meet. Able to do that. I know the issue with private dumpsters on public parking lot is another issue that I have to get with Ms. Haumacalli about. Kind of just wanted to see what y'all's thoughts are.
Aye. I'm sorry.
It's a difficult situation, because we obviously want restaurants on the square, and the trash has to go somewhere. And so we've been trying to facilitate some kind of solution, and that's the best that we have come up with.
Well, if it's the best, then I guess it's the best we could do. But the only thing that I sit there and think about is dumpsters sitting out in the hot sun, or whatever, full of food and the smell, and... Why is it Chubbs, let me ask you this, where's the dump, where's their, where did they want, where did you guys want them to put their dumpster? Back behind their business, how far back there?
That's where Chubbs currently has theirs, and they were willing to share their dumpster with the other businesses. But when you think about the distance from Phillies back there, and think about it, you know, in the middle of the night, and, and, you know, teenage employees having to take the trash down across the street, back behind the building, I can understand their concern.
Why don't they want to have cans behind their, behind their back door?
What now?
Why don't they want cans at their back door, the road?
No, what we're, we can't, we, we had residential cans at one point, and that was an absolute, I can remember, it was so awful up there, and that was just one restaurant at the time, because they just, they were stinky and hard to service, and the whole alley was full of garbage cans, and that was for just one restaurant. So we don't want to go with residential cans, that's not a good solution. What we want to do is the four-yard dumpsters, but one of the restaurants has said that they don't want that at their back door. They felt like, you know, that was a public entrance, and that that would...
Why is this our problem?
Um, well, I don't know the history on it, but again, there has to be a solution that we can help with if we want restaurants on our square. Because they don't have, they're not typical businesses.
What are they using now?
They're using a dumpster that's on private property that has to be moved off.
Whose private property is it?
It is owned by the Hanes.
Who?
One of them is by the Hanes, Hanes.
Clay Hanes.
Owns one of the properties, and the other property was...
It's Charlie Curtis.
Mr. Charlie Curtis.
Oh, he's one of the owners, I'm not sure he's the sole owner. So, and they don't want...
I don't like the idea of taking up so much space in the City Hall parking lot.
I don't like it either, but...
What, who owns that other parking lot that's right beside there, behind the restaurants? Clay Hanes.
What, what I've seen, I'm, I'm sorry.
What are you talking about?
He knows what I'm talking about, the parking lot right beside City Hall parking lot, behind the restaurant.
Oh, that's Clay Hanes.
That's where one of the dumpsters is now, and the other two are kind of tucked in behind there on... Yeah. Mr. Curtis and his business partners' property.
Nobody's happy with any potential solution.
The only thing I can say is I, I use a big dumpster, and they dump twice a week for me. I accumulate a lot of garbage. And I've just moved my dumpster location to another lot, but the problem you got there, too, is the weight of these trucks, and if they're full, then they pull on your parking lot, they're maneuvering around, and it's gonna start putting, you know, tracks into your parking lot, it's gonna mess your pavement up, the smell. I mean, if we have to put it there, I'd feel that we need to have a buffer, we need to block something up, some ways, some kind of doors that you can open up, and then where they can get in there and dump.
Right, it wouldn't need to be in an enclosure.
Steel, it's just, it's just awful having to travel that path, is what I think.
How often are they emptied?
Four times a week.
Four times a week?
Three, eight-yard dumpsters.
Are they full when they're empty?
Usually.
So Chubbs was willing to put it behind their place, but the other businesses thought it was too far to walk all the way over to Chubbs. So the lot that Clay Hanes owns, that he probably wanting to develop it or something, and want the dumpster off his... I understand his point, too. Do we have to make a decision on this tonight?
Well, we need to, we have met with them numerous times, trying to find the right, their cost is also going up substantially for the service. And so they're just not happy at all about this. And again, I mean, we want those restaurants on our square, we have to find a way to help them be supported. And it would not be, I mean, no trash solution would probably be catastrophic for them, right?
Yeah.
So, so, yeah, we gotta find a path forward and let them know something, that that's something that we can consider.
I mean, businesses are using that dumpster.
Well, everything that's right there on that alley, all those businesses that front Main Street, most of the other businesses around the square, with the exception of like Chubbs, or Star Ranch, or Gibson's, who, you know, they all have alleys where they can have dumpsters. Most of the other businesses are served with residential dumpsters, because they're not big trash generators. But that little stretch right there on that Bradley's Alley has, you know, two restaurants, a coffee shop, and, and I don't know what else might be coming in there, several boutiques. And we are talking about putting a cardboard dumpster and a trash dumpster, so that we can separate it out and hopefully reduce the load.
I'm just trying to think of what my problems are with my dumpster. Another problem I've got is cars blocking my dumpster, because they'll show up at a certain time of day. And if I have, I have lots of cars up there, and if I have cars blocking, they'll go on past there.
Correct.
And then I'm in a situation where I gotta call or pay another fee to get somebody out, and they'll even take pictures. So these trucks are not gonna be really easy to get in and out of this location. And we're gonna have to also make sure that there's no cars blocking that dumpster area.
Yeah, I think they pick up in the middle of the night, like, was it 3:00 AM or something like that?
Yeah, it's somewhere between 3:00 and 5:00. I've got a picture here that shows kind of the best location, I think, where they could come in off of Franklin, if you want to pass that around, and it comes straight through the parking lot, because that's a drive-thru there, and it can be backed out.
Can, can we put a building and enclose them completely, so we don't get all the smell and everything else out there?
I'm sorry.
Where would you put it?
I, I, I'm talking about if we use City Hall parking lot.
Well, is there a scenario where which they could pick up from Franklin? Has the lines?
Wait, is there a way to enclose them completely? To keep the mess and the smell and everything else out?
There is, I mean, there'd be a huge cost associated with it.
But I'd rather pay the cost than do it the right way, than have all that stuff, you know, blowing out and trash all over City Hall parking lot.
Picking up four times a week will help, I mean, it's not...
Has the smell been an issue already?
It was really an issue when it was residential cans.
They're not required to bag the trash.
It's either there or right there.
Yeah.
Because if you bag the trash, then it wouldn't smell.
I, I think they pretty much do, because they have to get it out to the dumpsters, I doubt they're...
There's, there's a little bit of loose trash, but majority of it is bagged. But still, you got all the food and stuff in there, bag gets ripped and keeps out.
Like, that would be the best solution, get stronger bags, because they, they do it at school. They have a lot of food at school, but because they bag the trash, you got the closed container, no birds, no animals can get in that stupid, to herd up.
Who's gonna pay for this, like...
They pay for it. We're, I mean, I guess we're looking at us taking on the facility cost.
That was another thing I wanted to ask, because I would do, I mean, there will be costs.
What do you mean, us taking the facility cost?
As far as an enclosure for it, I mean, there would be a cost associated with that. I mean, they pay for their trash now.
Ms. Haumacalli said she needs to research that, too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I don't know that we can do that or not.
Need to figure out the cost on that, and I don't know that we can use public funds for those private businesses.
Richard, I was sitting here talking to Councilman Hayes and kind of looking at the map. It's not too far of a distance where it's being, where it's at now to where it's wanting to be moved, if Craig is right, right? It's just like a little round or a little bit of a corner or something, that's not really... I mean, looking at that right there, honestly, it don't look like that bad of a location. You know, it's not like changing and moving it 50 yards or something.
Well, there's, so two of the dumpsters are around the building further up Bradley's Alley, about halfway between Sweeney Swift's and Phillies. I mean, the people at Phillies are gonna have another 150 yards they're gonna have to walk. So it's, it's, it's not a, for them, it's not bad, it's just...
Yeah, it makes a lot more sense once you look at this map right there.
Parking spots and...
I know that, that they're wanting answers, but I really think we might want to put this on the work session agenda and let us do some further research before y'all make any decisions tonight.
Okay, that's good.
What about in Franklin, don't they have the same situation, maybe we can see how they've handled it?
Where's that?
In Franklin?
Franklin, Tennessee?
Mm-hmm. They've got the same type of setup we do.
Probably not.
They had, they, they're a little bit more spread out, and I know that, like, when I was down there looking at, oh, what's it called, Harpitz Square, you know, they built enclosures in that construction, and you've got a bit more alley access. It's not as tight as our square is. Some parts of it is, though.
I mean, there are solutions, it's just trying to please everybody and take their trash.
Not gonna do that. Can't do that.
What's that?
Please everybody.
Oh, no. They're really not happy with us, and we're trying, aren't we?
We'll put it on the work session.
Yep.
The other thing, so as of...
More good news.
About a week and a half ago, our roll-off truck that hauls our recycling down to Nashville daily basis went down. The initial estimate to get it fixed was $9,000. They got into it, now it's $19,000. It's something, we use it two to three times a day going to Nashville with the influx of recycling. It's something we have to have. I mean, I've got, we're gonna get it fixed, that's without question, but it's got almost half a million miles on it. When we first bought it, it got bought right before I started with Public Works, and it was being used two to three times a week. Now it's two to three times a day, driving back and forth to Nashville. I spoke with the mayor, we think potentially maybe we'll pay for a new truck through some COVID relief funds. But I kind of want to let y'all know what we're going through, and we're having to contract out the hauling right now, with the private hauler hauling it for us. Thought we was gonna have to close down the recycle center for a couple of days, but end up not having to. And that's our, trying not to do that, so I could be coming back to this council, asking for... I could be coming back to this council, um, asking for money to purchase a new truck, uh, it's just, it's not slowing down any, it's continuing to get more and more and more. Kind of wanted to see what y'all's thoughts were on that, I mean, it's, a new truck is anywhere from a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. Uh, a used truck, ten-year-old with a hundred to two, a hundred thousand miles is anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred and fifty. It's just, it's something we're going to have to have to keep up with the recycling.
What about the, uh, contracting it out, is that really expensive on us, does it justify the end us owning our own truck and doing it that a way? It does.
Hundred and twenty-five dollars an hour.
The truck we got, you're talking about nineteen thousand dollars, it's a diesel, is it the engine that's bad, or is it the hydraulics on it?
The engine.
Engine.
I got them to price a remanned engine, and that went from nineteen thousand to forty thousand.
I do think that we are going to be faced with having to buy a new one, I think next week or the week after, we're going to kind of pile it, um, checking people's addresses to see, to get a sense of how much other cities are using that facility, and so I think we're going to set up with somebody checking um, IDs and making sure the street that they live on is in the city limits, and then educating them about where the Rappahannock facility is, and giving them a map, and telling them this is where you can go to recycle if you're not in the city limits, because Richard and I were talking about, when you see on social media people asking, where do we take our recyclables, whether it's Portland, even Wilson County, they all say Gallatin, Long Hollow Pike, and so I think we are, um, handling a lot of recyclables for communities that aren't paying for us to handle them, so.
That's all the bad news I have.
Glad.
Oh, Richard, I have one question for you.
Yes.
You remember that brush that was on, uh, over, by, uh, right off of Blythe Street, by Top Hog, that building there used to be, I can't think. And they got a lot of brush on the side road, whatever happened to that, I mean, it's still there.
It's still there, uh, thought, I'll, I'll double check on that, um, I'll give you a call tomorrow, I thought we got with the, uh, Officer Jackson to look into it, uh, believe what happened is the people that live across the street was bringing their brush and putting it on that side of the street. They're not, the, the corner that you're talking about does not have trash service, which in case we don't pick up the brush, but I believe it was the people across the street was bringing their brush over, but I'll check in tomorrow and give you a call.
Yeah, appreciate it, thanks.
Priest, um, anyone else up here?
Yeah, I got one thing, we, our city was lucky enough to have two young men from Gallatin High School that participated in the National Fishing Tournament this last week.
Absolutely.
Qualified really, really well, Mr. Zach Knight and Mr. Peter West have done an excellent job, and I just want to recognize those two young men, it's really, really hard to do what they've done and qualify for the National Fishing Tournament, and they've done a fantastic job, so I just want to recognize those two young men.
Thank you for doing that. Um, our congratulations to them. Anyone else on the council have any other business? I have just one thing that I want to bring to your attention, I did have copies made in Sedgwick's places, but, um, gone a matter at my home, um, about, um, redistricting, and so, um, wanted you all to be aware, I have talked to those with historical knowledge of the city, and apparently ten years ago, our city attorney worked with our GIS experts to present this council with a redistricting proposal, and then I think some slight modifications were made. And I don't know if this council has some desire to do it some different way this time, um, it does have to be approved by ordinance, and the reason I'm bringing it to you guys right now is that time is going to be a difference. The election commission, you know, elections happen next year, we're not getting the redistricting data until September, and I think people start qualifying for elections next year, probably, I know the first one's in May, so they may start qualifying in August, I don't really know. Um, so they need to get that redistricting information in as soon as they possibly can, and so I want us to move as quickly as we can once we get that information and then get passed through our council as soon as we can.
Mayor, I just know last time it was a rush thing to get done, and I know it's, we, we, we don't have much time, but as soon as we can get involved looking at it, it would be greatly appreciated because, you know, we're the ones that got to deal with those folks out there, and.
Have you, have you looked at it?
We don't have it yet, we don't get it until September, so.
I didn't know if you seen some preliminary or anything, okay.
Now, we have, we, the only thing I've seen, what, and I even, I don't even remember the source of this, but I did see somewhere that put a population projection out there for us, but that was it, I don't even know if it's a reliable number, um, I think we're supposed to get some data in August, and then the redistricting data is supposed to come by September one.
But it is rumored that we're, we're, we might be able to pick up somebody else to represent this area?
Um.
Statewide, you mean, you mean statewide?
Yeah, I mean, I think potentially, but that's not, that's not, so we just have to worry about our council districts. The state will worry about this, um, representative and senate districts, and then the county, um, the county commission will worry about the county commission districts. Now, I do want us to, um, be there, you know, to check on what they're doing, because I want to make sure that Gallatin has fair representation of the county. So I want us to engage with that, but we don't have a, you know, we don't have a, a vote in that, so.
We should give.
Still stay with five, a district, so will it change?
I don't, I, I mean, I'd.
To do that, you would have to amend the charter.
Because the charter costs for the two at large and the five districts, and I know as the population has grown, your districts have just grown, but, um, there will be, um, I think some council members will have more of a change than others, because you think about where the most population growth has been, so you're going, uh, it's, it's hard to say what will happen until you see where the populations are, and so, um, right now, you know, our districts kind of have these dividing lines, and those may really shift. Um.
I hope we get more county representation, we should with the growth, so.
Like I said, I hope we engage with that, because we definitely need to. So that, I just want to make you aware of that, and, and, um, Ms. Smiley's aware, and, um, I think we have, um, somebody from Public Utilities to help last time, so we should be. I'll do whatever I can to help. So that's all I have, um, nothing else on other business? Okay, moving forward now to public recognition on non-agenda-related items, if there's anyone here this evening that has something to speak to that's not on the agenda, now would be your time to come forward. Um, reminder, you introduce yourself, give us your address, you'll have five minutes to speak, and so public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
Y'all don't trip, Joe.
All right, Jimmy, you had to pick me up, and I know we can find some good people picking me out of the street.
I don't believe I'm going to be picking you up, Joe.
We got a good chief. My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin. The first thing I want to, uh, address tonight, I don't want anybody to think that I'm not behind the mayor with regard to the new plan that we have for our city, is long needed, and she's doing a nice job about getting that done, and we appreciate her efforts on that, but hey, period. Uh, it's one of those things by which I think this, this city has gone bunch, 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 bunch over the years. That is not anything that this group right here can, uh, do anything about, but that's just the way history was. Number two is, I want to chat, uh, chat with you folks, you're talking about stinking stuff in the square, okay? When I think about stinking stuff, I think of something that's money. That can be recycled, to go right on the properties or whatever, and be able to use that in, in a recycling program. Let me, let me class, let me tell you something. Today I had an opportunity to stop, bring, pick up some glasses over to Phyllis Business here in town, took them to the Lions Club, and that is a form of recycling in order for us to be able to have eyesight help for people. And for example, we have people in Uganda, we have people in, in, uh, Ecuador, and we've had people in, uh, uh, Haiti taking glasses there, that's recycling material. And we also have another group in town that deals with, deals with, uh, that deals with, uh, ear, ear stuff, we're talking about, uh.
Hearing aids?
Ear, ear, ear. Hearing aids, right, Jimmy, thank you. So anyway, we, we have that, but now it goes all the way down to the bottom of the pile, and that is, I'm challenging the mayor. Get a group that all they do is look into recycling, period. And this problem that you have here on, in the city square is something that we can work into that total program and, and save us a pile of money about putting it in the hole. Now, one of these days, it's going to be expensive to put stuff in the hole, because how you going to get to the hole and where is it? Can't be in this region because of the topography of the land and, and the, uh, the problems with our, um, limestone, it's not going to work. I've been there, I've done that. So I think you folks might want to do that, and I appreciate Mr. Brown, if you would, if you would put that on your calendar of events, and maybe we can be able to, uh, work with everybody to see if we can't do more recycling. And, uh, I know about the stink, the boss lady fusses at me when I put the stuff out in the bucket in the back, and I'm going to put that on my grocery, put it on, put it on my plants. Ain't nothing better than putting, putting banana peels on your tomatoes, Jimmy. So, that makes them tomatoes go good, so anyway, you got to learn how to do the stuff, got to be like a country fu- country folks. So with that, I'll leave you all in peace.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-agenda-related items this evening? Yeah, see, no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. Bringing us to a final motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Overton, all in favor say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening, I hope you have a safe week, um, thank you for joining us this evening, good night.
Yeah.